Good evening, welcome to the Monday, August 7th, 2017, meeting of the Albion City Council. If you have a cellphone, I'd ask that you put it on silent. I call this meeting to order and we will begin with a moment of silence. Thank you, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask Clerk, let me go to call her off.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. Are there any comments from council this evening? Wow, okay. Would you, Councilmember Reed, would you like to have this read now, or?
No, that's for you.
Oh, oh, that's a standby, okay. Okay, we'll move forward to presentations. Just for the sake of getting everything through, if we keep the presentations to about 10 minutes, and if council has questions, I can extend that time. I just want to make sure that everyone has an amount of time. So, we'll begin with Economic Development Corporation, second quarter update from EDC President Amy Dupre.
I promise I won't be 10 minutes. In your packet, you have the second quarter update, so I'm not going to go over everything in that. I'm going to kind of just go over a few things, and if you've got any questions, we can hit on it. And in addition, I asked that the clerk pass out a new report called the Prospect Report. That's for your use to understand a little bit more about the different projects and prospects that we're working with. So, as you can see on the second quarter update, at the chart at the top, things have been very busy, especially in prospect and project activity in context related to development of the community. With that, it's important to note that our staff time has been consumed with reacting to prospects and development projects, and as such, retention calls saw a slight decrease over this last quarter. That doesn't mean that if an existing company had a need or reached out to the EDC, it went unanswered. The retention number that you see there is merely a proactive meeting that is spearheaded by the EDC to keep a pulse on the employers in our community and the employees. Building capacity of the EDC seems to be the number-one issue that we have right now, and it's important that we focus on that so that we can address all the prospect and development needs of the community while maintaining a strong retention calling program, and then still have the ability to be proactive in looking to, for industry and businesses in our community and good-paying jobs for our residents. Right now, being proactive is taking a backseat because everything is reactive, and that's not always a good place to be. So with that, we've hired Danielle Nelson, who y'all are aware of and know. She started early this July, and she's in the final steps of completing the RRC, the Redevelopment Ready Certified Community. Once that certification is in place, she'll take on a larger economic community role within the EDC, allowing us to better serve the community. In addition, we hired Kaitlyn Burrard and Laura Overholt, and they joined the EDC team. Kaitlyn is the Albion Food Hub Manager, and Laura took on the coordinator position for the farmer's market. Both of these are part-time positions, and that we hope to grow into full-time if we're successful in getting some grant funding that we applied for earlier this year. Hopefully, we'll know that later this month. Hopefully, you've already seen that there's been growth in the farmer's market. If you haven't, I would invite you to go down and check it out. She's done a phenomenal job growing the vendors, getting participation, and if you haven't already liked her on Facebook, the Albion Farmer's Market, do it. She gives live updates, so you don't forget the Wednesday nights and the Saturday mornings. She's just doing a great job. Kaitlyn's also working hard to up the offerings that are being held at the Albion Food Hub. She's concentrated on finalizing processes, applications, and agreements, but she's also working to identify some class offerings that will start in the fall and in the year to come. Hopefully, we'll have a full year schedule soon, and we can start marketing those. She's got a lot on her plate, and she's very motivated and excited, and she wants to see the food hub be successful and be able to operate without any grant assistance, and right now, it requires grants to operate. It's a true gem in our community, and I think it does set the entrepreneurs in Albion and Albion area apart from other communities that don't have a shared kitchen, and it's a real opportunity for them to be successful. You probably have already seen this, and if you haven't, I hope you mark it on your calendar. The first pop-up retailer is going to be in the Food Hub Marketplace, and that's Cooper's Dish. They're going to be open August 17th through the 20th. Be sure to go down and check them out and support this business, so they'll be operating right in the little marketplace right next to the commercial kitchen. This past quarter, we also hosted three events, one on energy savings and showing companies how to reinvest those savings back into their, into their company and make it more successful. Another one on financing community projects and how to use accredited and non-accredited investors to close financing gaps. And the last one was focused on probably the number-one issue facing businesses today, and that's workforce, and identifying resources and assistance programs that could help businesses compete in today's employment market. We continue to work very closely with a number of prospects and projects, as identified in the report that you have. One in particular is an international client, and we just received word earlier in July that we made the first cut of sites from five down to three, and we're working with that company, or the consultant to that company, to identify a general local manager. So, that gives me a pretty good indication that we're closer in that number-three to number-one, but we'll know that soon. The C-level execs will be coming later this month to visit our community again. I wanted to just kind of hit on the, some of those prospects that you're going to see. I didn't put dates on them, and they're not really in an order. They're kind of in the order that I came across them, and they'll be updated every month and given to my board, so they can kind of understand a little bit better where we're at with prospects and projects, without giving too much detail that puts it at risk of losing the project. In previous employment, I saw too many projects all of a sudden just go away because word got out and the company was upset about that. So when they want it held in confidence, it's our job to hold it in confidence. So that report kind of gives you enough information to understand what kind of businesses and industries we're working with, but not enough to identify the exact company. Also, this last quarter, actually just a couple of weeks ago, Peabody Project came before you for your final support for the application for Community Development Block Grant Funds. That has been submitted to the state. We should have a response this week on whether or not that application is complete and final, and will be presented to the Michigan Strategic Fund for support. If it is supported, that will finally open up that, the ability for ACE Investments to start the real project, which is the construction of that building. So, you know, when we talk, we talk about timeline and it being a long time, it was last August that the Dobbins started working on that project and talking about how they were going to get the financing in place and how it was all going to come together. And here, it's August again, and they still haven't gotten final clearance to actually start demolition or anything else. So it is, it is a true process, and it takes a full team of people to make sure it happens. Included on the update page, there's many other highlights that I haven't touched on. I'm happy to answer anything that you've got questions on. I just wanted to kind of hit on that it's been extremely busy this last quarter. I see this next quarter being even busier. That's a real opportunity for Albion, and I think, you know, given next quarter and the quarter after that and a year, we're going to see some real momentum that will not only grow, you know, individual corridors, but grow Albion and the community overall, because each stronger corridor we get trickles over, and it gets, it becomes more of a sense of place for people to come. So, with that, I'll open up to questions.
Councilmember French.
Thank you. Amy, I noticed in one of these, the fact that the site was submitted, the site was limited on available wastewater treatment options, we lost a cut, and that, that got me thinking about it. Do we, as a city, need to start planning to build some speculative buildings to attract, add the appropriate infrastructure in it in order to attract a company that might bring in 250 jobs? I look at the, we're a finalist for a job manufacturing project that's going to hire 18 people, and I think what we're hoping is, is that we can bring in a company that will hire a couple of hundred. And so, that got me thinking about whether our infrastructure is attractive enough, or do we need to start thinking over the next three to five years to be building a speculative building?
You know, yes, I think it's time that we start looking at those things. You know, speed to market is number-one, and if they don't have a building available, they're bypassing us, and you'll see quite a few of these, well, I didn't even include the ones that we just totally didn't have anything to submit. You know, so sometimes we're ruled out even before that, but the speculative issue is a touchy one, because you have to guess what's the right size. You know, but in today's market, Michigan has very few buildings that can compete right now, and those that do have buildings, I don't know if you're following in the news, but Battle Creek Unlimited just did some prep of land to get its site pad ready. Well, they think one of those is sold. So, even though they got criticized for spending that money, it looks like it's going to pay off, but that's the juggle, you know? When I started in economic development, spec buildings went like that, and then they didn't, you know, so it's a juggling act, but I think definitely having sites ready with the infrastructure in place, and then trying to pinpoint what's that sweet spot for a building would be key.
And where we, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
With the 429 project, we now have water and sewer, correct?
425.
425, sorry. And so, the next thing, if that would be the site that we would think about doing some speculative work, it would be preparing sites more, actually bringing the sewer and water to particular locations within that acreage?
Yeah, and as I've been looking through the files, because we've got a client that's very interested in that, I noticed some drawings or renderings for an industrial park there. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that. It looked like it was quite a while ago. You know, even getting to that point or trying to figure out, because there was quite a few locations in that, in that site plan for large buildings. Even having that to market, so we at least show that we've got a plan in place, and we're not just going to hodgepodge, put buildings in there, is going to be important. They, they want to see that, that speed to market has been cut as, as quick as possible. There's a plan in place.
Hopefully, get Foxconn here, maybe, I don't know.
I'm sorry?
Get Foxconn. So, the question I had regarding, I got some of the projects on the back, so like most communities, there's like a standard set of things you can, the state allows us to do in terms of incentives, like beyond that, what are other communities doing to,
Are you talking about incenting the, to be more proactive and get them to come here?
Yes. So, we can offer certain incentives because of, you know, just how the state allows us to do, but then what are other communities doing? I mean, I think probably one of them is what Battle Creek did, is they actually built, or they kind of cleared it, right?
Yeah, they cleared, and they, they are fortunately very, they are very fortunate to have a large Tifa balance, and they are able to do stuff like that. We're not in that same spot, but I, you know, we have assembled land. That 425 is, is a gem. Most communities don't have that, so, so going towards that and putting a plan in place is a good thing. Definitely supporting it with incentives is, is key. We're not going to be able to compete without that, and there's state-level incentives, which, lucky for you, I worked there and I know how to get, so we're, we're good on that. But there's also the tax, the tax incentives, and today, manufacturing, especially the 250, the 500, or 500 employee ones, can go anywhere. So having the employees here, having a place that people want to, to grow as a family and live, so we can compete with employees, we've got to get creative in some of the things where we're looking to attract those businesses.
Councilmember Lawler. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. In your report, you talked about the farmer's market?
Yeah.
I just had a concern from some of the residents of the community, and was there, do you know if there was a vendor that left from the food hub downtown?
From the food hub or the farmer's market?
From the farmer's market.
Not that I'm aware of. Was it just recent?
I think so.
There was some concern that somebody hadn't gotten paid, is that what you're referencing?
No, I just know that a farmer had declined to participate in that activity anymore. And my thing about it is, just to put something on somebody's mind, whoever is over that, what, what, what are we doing to try to keep our vendors a part of the farmer's market, since they are community gardens that people can go and get for free? So, just to put something on somebody's mind about that.
Yeah, absolutely, and Laura does an excellent job engaging with the vendors. In the short time she's been in place, I mean, she goes to all over other farmer's markets and solicits them, come work down here. So I'll look into it, and we're definitely hoping to put in place a, an advisory committee to grow the farmer's market and address some of those concerns.
Yeah, I just see a lot of competition with the community gardens and farmer's markets, so a lot of people are going to go where they can get it for free.
And, and that's great. A lot of people don't want to grow their own, and that, so there, you've got to have multiple options, and that's really what it is, is multiple.
Are there any other questions? Okay, saying that, thank you.
Thank you.
We will, next we'll have a update from the Albion District Library, Director Cindy Stanczek.
Good evening, everyone. So, it's been a little bit since I've visited, so I'm going to sort of fast-track over some of the things that have been happening. We are still in, we're approaching the last week of Summer Reading Challenge 2017. We do have a children's program, a teen program, and an adult program. Some of the highlights that we've had this summer included a field trip to an herb farm. We had an essential oils workshop this past Saturday. We're having kids and teen lock-ins. There's just so much going on. If you're not, if you're on Facebook and you're not, if you want to keep abreast of all the things that's happening at the library, I highly advise following the library's Facebook page. We have a very active events page, so that you can like something and get a reminder that it is coming up. We finished our survey, it did close, we're in the preliminary stages of evaluating that information. We would have liked to see a little bit more participation, but isn't that the way it always is with a community survey? So we'll be using that information. We were asking some of the big questions, like what days do you want us open? What hours do you want us open? What programming would you like to see more of, collections? You know, do you want us to buy more children's books or more nonfiction DVDs? Or, we were asking the big questions, and we did get feedback, I believe, from 152 people in, in seven weeks, so I consider that pretty good. We're going to be using that information in our strategic plan that is going to be happening in the next several months. Let's see, we are August, we have our book discussion, we have a joint book, sort of reading group with what is now Sterling Books &amp; Brew. The next one coming up, I believe, is this month, I'm not sure on the date, I apologize, but it is Underground Railroad by Colson Whitehead, which is the Pulitzer Prize-winning book, it is also the National Book Award winner. So if you are interested, we will do our best to get you a copy, but there are copies available at Sterling Book &amp; Brew as well. We also have a YA Ever After Book Club, so these are adults and teens reading teen or young adult fiction. The next one is actually by Jason Reynolds, it's called When, When I Was the Greatest. It has a fairly provocative title, or cover, but it is a really interesting read, and that group actually meets at Big B. Let's see, September is a very, very busy month for us. We go pretty much, it's library card signup month, which generally, we have a drawing. If you come and either get a new card or renew your card in the month of September, you get entered for the drawing, but it is also back-to-school time. It is also Healthy Babies Day, it is also Festival Book Sale, and it is also our budget hearing. So if anybody is interested in attending the budget hearing, by law, we have to have our budget passed by the end of September, so that we can levy, on the winter levy. So if anybody, we'll have the date coming out, and we'll be putting an ad out about that. Dolly Parton Imagination Library, we have thus far this year hit 400 participating children. So these are children ages zero to five, who are receiving free, age-appropriate books addressed to their child at their home, with the ideal situation being that by the time the child turns five and graduates, with the final book being Kindergarten, Here I Come, that they have had these books, they've had experience and contact with these books, so they enter kindergarten more ready to learn. And if anybody has small children in the family, you can appreciate how excited they are to get mail with their name on it. My nieces are, participate over in the Flint area, and they love getting their books. Love it, love it, love it. And they do make an effort, if you have twins or triplets in the family, the kids get different books each month, so it's not the triplets getting the same book every single month. Our GED program is currently on hold, because we're having some infrastructure work done on our network, funded by the E-Rate program, the USEC program, which funds libraries and schools, so they will be returning next week, Monday, and we are always looking for volunteers, if anybody is interested. We're especially looking for mentors with special education experience or learning disability experience, that would be incredibly helpful. We do have a number of adult students who have some challenges, and we're looking for volunteers that can really meet that need in a way that maybe our current mentors are not as experienced. We have hope. There was a program with NASA, for those of you who are following, the full solar, or the full eclipse is coming on August 21st. We may or may not, and we will put out a press, we may have some eclipse glasses coming to the library that we would be able to distribute in the community, so that people can actually watch without harming themselves. And then, October is full speed right into Albion's Big Read. So, it is non-stop, always at the library, this is just a taste of what is going on. If anybody would like more information, as I said, you can follow the Facebook page, visit our website, or just come in, poke your head in, and, and ask, we'd be happy to have you. Last, I do want to introduce our, we have a Vista member stationed at the library this year, and this is Leah Parr. She'll be working with us for the next year on grant writing and capability and building. We're very excited. So, welcome, Leah. And you don't have to get up and talk if you don't want to, I know. The microphone, the microphone! But, other than that, are there any questions for me?
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. You said the GED program was on hold, right?
Because the room is actually physically having work on it, yeah.
Did you give a date, an anticipated date?
This upcoming Monday is coming, it's coming back.
That's right, okay.
And it will be returning with somewhat different hours, so it used to be that we met five times a week, they will now be meeting four times a week, only once on Thursdays. So, Mondays and Tuesday mornings from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., and then Wednesday, Thursday nights from 5:45 to 7:45. That way, we can best meet a wider, meet a wider variety of, because our adult learners are often working, or they have children, and so we try to have our mentors available at least once a week, that's a good fit for them.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Cindy, has the, I know that as a part of the millage that was passed, there was suggested that there would be, the library would be open on Sundays? Has that occurred? And if not?
No, and, and so here, there was a lot of confusion on this topic, because we levy in December, and our current millage continued through, we, so we levy in winter for the following fiscal year. We run the same as the city, which is January to December. So we actually wouldn't see that new millage rate until we levy this winter.
Okay.
So, we are looking to expand hours, to restore lost hours in January, beginning in January, because that's when we'll be able to collect the new millage rate. That was one of the questions we asked on the survey, was what days and what times do you want open? Because it occurred to us, you know, if we're going to restore open hours, then, you know, we think we know what people want, so maybe Sundays aren't the best day. Do people want a full day on Saturday? Do they want us to open earlier? Do they want us to open later? Do they want us to be open on Friday, which we haven't been open on Friday in something like two decades? So, we wanted to say, if we're going to do this, we want to make sure we're doing it the time that best serves the community. So those were some of the big questions we were asking, and as I said, we're still looking through that. It will very likely be restoring the hours that were previously on Sunday. The math was to restore four, the four lost open hours, and we're also looking at extending the children's room hours potentially as well. But we've got to make sure that we can do it in a fiscally responsible way, which means that we're looking at, at Sunday, and we, we did our best to communicate that through the millage language, but, millage language. You've all seen it, it's, it's not very legalese.
Yes.
Legalese, so, any other question?
No, thank you.
Oh, okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to presentation item C, Redevelopment Ready Community, third-quarter update, Danielle Nelson.
Hello, Danielle Nelson, project manager for the Albion EDC. So I'm going to keep it pretty brief, a lot of what's been done over the past quarter for the Redevelopment Ready Community Program through the MEDC, spent a lot of hurry-up-and-wait, and so, there's been a lot of work done, and we're just kind of waiting for some things to get approved, and then we'll be in the green on some more of these items for the certification. So the overall goal for RRC is to be done with all of our tasks by the end of this year, except for the zoning ordinance update and rewrite. That'll have to be done by a firm, and so we'll be putting out a request for proposals soon to kind of evaluate some bids on that, and there is funding through the MEDC available. They provide up to $20,000 in technical assistance for these projects here. It requires a one-to-one match, so they put up 20, we put up 20, and we're, we're currently looking at a lot of different funding sources. I'll be having a meeting this Friday to look at getting some funding for, to match that as well. So, just to give you a quick update on some of the progress that's been made over the third quarter, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, or EDSP for short, a steering committee has been put together for that, which Mayor Brown and Councilmember Spicer, you were a part of that steering committee, so there's been representation of local businesses, the DDA, residents, the college, Planning Commission, and Albion Reinvestment Corporation. They've come together to draft the EDSP, and that draft will be reviewed soon by the steering committee and then sent to the EDC Board of Directors for final approval. Another thing that we've been working on is the Future Land Use and Zoning Plan, that's actually the Phase Two of the Comprehensive Plan. It'll completely be done with the planning part of the Comprehensive Plan after that, and just focus more on implementing the plan and doing our quarterly and annual reports for that. So, that has a 63-day public comment period, and there's actually, on the very last page of this, there's a more detailed timeline of the dates that, that we'll need to go to Planning Commission and City Council, required by law, it kind of has to go bounce back and forth between the two a little bit, but there's definitely going to be some time to make tweaks to that. We used a lot of the public input that we had at the Community Visioning Celebration. We're very happy with the number of people that showed up, we had well over 100 people there giving their input, and so hopefully, we reflected what people want to see in that plan, and we've got more time to make sure that it's accurate. So, the next thing, the zoning ordinance update, as I said, that will, we're going to be putting on an RFP, so that we can have some companies bid on that project, and then once we have the bids, we'll be able to go from there. So again, some more kind of preparation than waiting. The next thing, the Community Engagement Statement, this is just a document that the MEDC likes to see cities have, and it's a document that formalizes the city's methods for community participation and engagement. So, essentially, it's not only like states the city's commitment to having active citizen engagement for both large and small projects, it also encourages developers to have the same, use the same methods, kind of based on what we've already done that's been successful, things that have not been so successful for community input. So, it should be helpful for, you know, anybody from grassroots organizations like the community gardens that want to get things started, and they need assistance or guidance on how to best communicate with the public to large developers in the city. The EDC has also convened a community marketing committee to identify funding sources and generate ideas for a community brand. Right now, we're mostly in the identifying funding sources phase of the Right now, we're mostly in the identifying funding sources phase of this, because it does cost quite a bit of money, unfortunately. So, and again, though, the MEDC is able to help out with that kind of project with their funding. So we're just gonna have to look at how we get the match for it and whatnot. And then, so some of the things that are coming up next, we'll, now with our Americor Vista on board, Ryan, who is here with us today, as well as the Vista's who are serving at the city of Albion, will be able to put together some property information packages. And as Amy explained just a moment ago, the speed to market is very important for developers, and property information packages just increase that speed. It lets people know what properties are available, what environmental assessments have been done, anything about the property history, what it's zoned for, to get developers in the door and keep them on the hook. And then, the next thing is a guide to development, so once again, with more support from the Vista team, and as well as, we have an intern that's helping out right now as well, and they're doing some research on lease rates and things like that, as well as develop, compiling materials for like permitting, site plan reviews, timelines, all that kind of stuff, just to really increase that speed to market for developers, so that we can just keep attracting developers and bringing in jobs and investment to Albion. So I've, so that's just the little summary sheet that I typed up, but then also, the full report is attached, so you can look at it in more detail, and I'll be submitting that to the MEDC this week. So there might be a few tweaks made to it, but that is generally what will be on it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, I just have one kind of, kind of broader question, but in terms of, and you may not know this, but like, in terms of the statewide, like what, in terms of communities that are in compliance with this, like where is Albion? Are we, are we more towards the first wave, or?
For the RC program in general, I'm gonna defer to Amy on that one. Are we kind of in the first wave of the RC cities, or second?
I would say we're more in the second wave. There's, I don't, I don't know the number, there's a percentage that's already certified, but it is a long process. We are well ahead of many communities that have just started.
Okay.
Yeah, the first phase had very few cities participating, and so I think there may be, there may be around 30 communities that are actually RC certified, or at least in the process, and we're one of them. So we are definitely the early adopters and we are well on our way. It's going to become required come October for all cities if they want any MEDC or state funding. So we're all, we're way ahead of the game, I would say.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council? Seeing none, thank you. Item D, under Presentations, we're just going to, probably have to reschedule that. We'll do it that way. Public comment, public comments. Any persons wishing to address the council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than three minutes. We'd ask you to observe proper decorum. Are there any public comments this evening on agenda items? Okay. Okay. Seeing none, we will proceed to the consent calendar. Approval of study session minutes, July 13th, 2017. Regular session minute, session minutes, July 17th. Study session minutes, July 24th. And then there are just various applications for use of, I guess, the parks. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second? Moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Items for individual discussion. Item A, request approval, oh, actually, I better read the other one. Request approval for resolution number 2017-33, approve intergovernmental agreement with the city of Marshall for continued operation of the Albion-Marshall Connector. Is there, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Do you wanna give some update? I had, I had one question I'll ask after you.
Mayor and council, if you recall from the previous meeting, we were advised through the Albion-Marshall Connector that they had their anticipated shortfall of approximately 30,000 for the ongoing operation of that service. At that meeting, the Marshall Public Schools stepped forward and indicated that they would contribute 10,000 towards that gap, and the Oaklawn Hospital also indicated they would contribute 5,000, leaving the 15,000 remaining. And so what you have before you is an approval of the agreement, the annual agreement we have with the Albion-Marshall Connector for that service and the city's participation at the 15,000 level.
Okay, so I have two questions. So one, I, there was a letter acknowledging the Oaklawn Hospital's contribution, was, is, do we have anything from the district acknowledging there?
It should be in your package.
Okay. I missed that.
It is.
Okay, okay. And then the other question is, so when I went, when I read the agreement, there was the language, so we, we pay a lump sum, so I'll be, so we're just gonna pay all of the 30,000 and then we get the?
Our official commitment, if you will, is the 30,000. The, the Marshall Public Schools is going to make their payment directly to Albion-Marshall Connector.
Okay.
So we won't be required to do that, and I, as I understand, Oaklawn will make their payment to the city.
Okay.
Because they can't directly support services of that nature, so.
So then, will, will we have received that from Oaklawn before we? Okay. And then, the other, the other part of that was, uh, let me try to read that. There was language about, because it was, it was different than what was mentioned early in the meeting about, my understanding was that, like, Marshall wouldn't do any kind of, like, soliciting of, um...
The city of Marshall?
Yeah. Soliciting of funds, that was kind of on us, but I think in here, I think they, uh, where did I find that?
And I believe it's essentially the same language that we had from the prior year.
Okay. Yeah, just, it just seemed, where did I highlight that? Okay, here it is, yeah. So it's in 32. It says, "Both parties agree to pursue new funds after the effective date of the agreement. Either party may identify funding opportunities that may be pursued jointly." So I mean, are they saying that they are, they're, they're gonna commit to helping, to look, or am I interpreting that right?
This was actually language that I had asked to be inserted last year.
Okay.
So that we could define who was raising the money and who would get credited for it, because presumably, they're going to continue to look for grant funding.
Okay.
But would that go towards our 30,000 or towards their overall operation? So that was just to try to help clarify.
Okay.
That part of it.
Okay. And so they, last time, they didn't agree with that, or they?
No, they agreed.
Okay. Okay. And that's, those are my questions. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Barnes?
Yes, again, I say concerning the connector, we find ourselves where we were last year when they came and gave a presentation. And at that time, they themselves admitted that there was not enough ridership to sustain the endeavor. Therefore, the writing was on the wall that business plan couldn't be successful without donors. They had went through the circuit of the donors that they thought they could get money from, and we gave $40,000. I voted no. I stated at that time, they would be back again. They are back again this year, looking for 30,000, and a couple Marshall entities are helping them, but the city of Albion was still putting in another 15,000. Mr. Emory Bates owned a transportation service right at Michigan in Superior. He's a black minority business owner who came to this podium, and he was providing medical transportation, business transportation, employment transportation. He invested in vehicles, equipment, and employees, and he stated concerns that, why would the city be helping this entity in private enterprise? Finally, the connector contributed to his business closure. The connector started off as a health ride. It has turned now into shopping for these other activities that it wasn't intended for. That tells us they changed their business plan. Moving forward, even in the statements that were read by the city manager, we will be looking for more funding again in the future, after the date of these expenditures, if they don't find other money or increase the ridership. I think that this money's coming out of our general fund, and we have other city businesses that we can use the general fund on, specifically our own employees with negotiations coming up with our unions, possible raises, trying to keep them at a 90-10. We've made a couple hires so far, so my survey with the city is down that we might need six more employees. These men and women are still working at 50% below capacity and are still maintaining 100% of the work. Even though they're jumping from job to job, department to department, they're getting it done. I just can't see us constantly putting money into an endeavor that is already stated. They don't have the ridership and it's a failing endeavor. Thank you.
Councilmember French?
Thank you, Mayor. In response to Councilman Barnes's comments, I would add that we are part of a larger county transportation plan system that is supposed to be making some decisions in the next couple of years. And so I see that approving this allows for transportation solution for our most at-risk citizens to have access to opportunities and medical and other job kinds of connections in Marshall. But this is strictly a stopgap. You know, in two years, three years, the county will have a transportation solution, and the, and the Albion-Marshall Connector may not be needed. And certainly, we can make a commitment of half of what we paid, or less than half of what we paid last year, to keep this going for the number of citizens that use the connector to get to jobs, and the number of citizens, 500 or so rides a month, to get to medical appointments and other opportunities in Marshall. So I would approve this resolution.
Are there any other comments from council? Councilmember Barnes?
Well, right now, we still do have a transportation service here. Mr. Jeter has a health transportation service that's still up and running, and he had to cut back his service also because of the connector. It's not that we don't have the services, it's that we as a city are putting money into a private business, and therefore, down the road, fine, we're looking for regionalization all over the county and other endeavors also, but it's not our job to save businesses.
Wait, are you saying that the connectors are private?
Well, I'm saying that...
It's not.
For me, there's transportation available in town. We are not providing Emory or Mr. Jeter with general fund money in a weight gap situation for them to be successful. We're doing that from a connector. It's the same transportation. It started out as purely getting people to the medical places at a very reasonable rate. This gentleman started a business in Albion, and as he talked to me and as he came to the podium, he felt we helped destroy his business. Mr. Jeter is still providing medical transportation. The transportation is here, but we are putting another entity before the homegrown guys who try to start businesses, and they're minorities.
The city manager.
You basically touched on my point. I just wanted to clarify that it's not a private enterprise, it's a, a public service.
Oh, I understand, ma'am. Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I had some concerns with regard to the funding of the Albion-Marshall Connector as well, and then we had the session where, and I was totally not supportive of spending $30,000 of the city's monies to take our citizens to spend what essentially is money in that community, and us funding that, that happening. But however, and I know that this began initially for medical reason and it expanded. You wanna go and eat at Applebee's in Marshall, you can take the connector and then take it back. So I, I certainly wasn't supportive of that, and I wasn't willing to spend $30,000 out of our general fund to do that. However, since the Marshall Public Schools and the, I believe it, Oaklawn Hospital has come forward and said that they would contribute essentially half of that fund balance, I, I believe that I can now support the $15,000 that remain in balance that would need to make this operative for this last year. But I do wanna go on record as saying, I think we mentioned at that meeting that we were gonna get a committee together and get, try to get something in place and funding, because I, I don't think that I could support this at any future date. Just wanted to make that known. Thank you.
And I, and I would just say that that's kind of, what you just said was what I was gonna say. So, yeah, Councilmember Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to kind of piggyback off Councilmember Spicer, the committee that we talked about developing, does everybody hear from the connector? Like, how, we need, that needs to happen soon. And I don't know if it's our place necessarily to initiate that, but maybe we can kinda get the ball rolling for next year, so this doesn't, doesn't have to be such a burdensome decision. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Councilmember, Mark Domingo.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Hey, guys, was it, did there a motion and a second? I didn't hear.
Yes.
That happened at the beginning.
I'm sorry. No.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Item B, discussion, EDC plan for the parking lot on Austin Ave and Albion Street. Councilmember Barnes?
Well, she did such a great job sending me the paperwork, and I talked to her. For me, she doesn't have to do it if she doesn't want to, because I have it all down and I'm totally satisfied. I mean, it's, it's beautiful, but if she wanted to do it, she can.
I didn't know I was presenting that at the beginning with. I thought I was just supplying the information.
No problem.
So if there's questions, I'm happy to address it.
Well, I just, okay. This is a great report, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
I, I just have one question. You're talking, so the, if, you're calling a parking lot, but I think it's the lot that used to be a, a gas station right there? Okay. Now, is that?
It's not, there's a, there's a potential plan in place, if, if development needs it.
Okay. That, but that, is that privately owned?
It's owned by the EDC.
Oh, it was, okay. Okay.
So that sheet of paper, or that?
Yes, yeah. Anybody wanna come up? Yeah. Sorry about that.
That's okay. That, that sheet that I supplied is all the EDC-owned properties on Austin, and it gives the history. I have to thank Neely for putting it together. She did an awesome job on getting all that history put together in, in one spot.
Okay. Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you. We have that sheet, Amy, but for the benefit of people who don't have it, can you give a quick summary as to what?
I don't even have that sheet. Honestly, I did not think I was presenting it.
Just for the benefit of people watching and the audience, thank you.
So there's a, there was discussion on a potential parking lot, and we were talking about 619, 617, and 611 Austin Avenue. Those are three parcels that the EDC currently owns, and, and just as, as way of background information, we got those, we had to buy them from the Michigan DNR. So if, if we were to sell those or market them in any way, we, the, whatever we paid, the balance has to go back to DNR. So there's no benefit to the EDC to maintain those, to market them. The costs are, would just be ours to own. But in addition to that, there's a number of other properties on Austin that EDC is, is record owner of. 1111 Austin Avenue is one of them. That's right outside of the industrial park. That one, we are working with the city to rezone to make it a better suit for the industrial park, because right now, it's a B1 zoning and that doesn't really make sense. And then there's a number of other properties that, that go between that 1111 and the Austin-Albion Road that are owned by us. Do you want more than that?
Good enough. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. Set. We're going to move forward to discussion, item C, discussion or update on the Rieger Park Swimming Hole there. Did you ask for that, right?
Thank you, I did. Mayor, thank you, Mayor. I, we, I received the City of Albion newsletter and, or email and city happenings, and included in that was a notice that the Rieger Park Swimming Hole is not, is dangerous and that people should not be swimming or in there or anything. And I just wanted an update from the city manager or whomever as to what is the problem, the issue with that regard? And, you know, and if, what it is and what can be done about it, if anything, and maybe nothing. I just wanted to know what the deal is.
Well, Mayor and council, the status of it hasn't changed. We just simply posted a sign that was consistent with the state of the pond, I guess you'll call it. And it has an underwater spring. And at some point, things shifted. In order to address it now, there is a valve that would have to be repaired and probably replaced. And that would also require building a dam around it in order to get that construction. So that means draining that area. So it would not be a minor undertaking to even attempt to evaluate it, let alone address the issue. We are looking at seeing if there are possibly some DNR, DEQ acceptable chemicals that we can at least try to deal with some of the algae growth there in regards to what's happening relative to the water and the stagnation, because it does not have a flow that allows for the circulation of the water and the aeration. And Director Jim Linderson from Public Services is here. I don't know if he wants to add something. He could probably say it in far more technical terms than I can, other than the thingy is broke.
We don't understand. Well, don't get too technical, but.
It's obviously no secret that we have algal growth, aquatic growth in the swimming area. My feeling is it's because there's not a water flow through it. The issue is, for those that have been around town as long as I have, we used to affectionately call the Third Pond up above, which is closer to the dam itself. It's south of the swimming area, the Rieger Park Swimming Area. But there is a valve that we can control the water that flows through Rieger Park Pond. The problem is, is that valve is about three feet underwater. It is actually in that pond, that upper pond. It has broken the closed position. So that this point, as Manager Mitchell has indicated, we're going to have to look at some type of an engineering study to figure out what we can do there. There is also the option of some type of a chemical application to remove that. But there again, the discharge from the pond goes directly to the river, and I'm hesitant to obviously do anything chemically in that pond that may end up in the river without DEQ, DNR permission.
Councilmember French.
So what, what would be the downside to breaking the valve?
Yeah. To raking it? To break it.
To break it in an open position, like literally sever the valve to have an open pipe between the upper pond and the Rieger Pond. What's the downside to?
What that valve was put in for, so we can regulate the flow of summer and winter, rainy season versus night.
Right.
So that we can reduce the flow in the wintertime. So at that point, it was being used for a skating pond. Yeah, so. Any other questions? Thank you.
I guess my only question is, is there a, is it on the agenda? Do we have a timeframe we can contact and just like see what possible? I mean, what I'm saying, have we contacted like Mickey Benjer or any of that?
Yeah, I can look into it, find out if there is any acceptable, allowable type chemical application we can do there. There again, you got to remember it's August, swimming season's about over, so. But I'll definitely look into it.
Thank you. Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, he maybe. He maybe. I would just like to say or suggest, I don't know what it would cost, expensive or out of reach for us to basically get someone in there to take a look and give us a written estimate as to, you know, so that we can have it in black and white. I understand that you're saying it, you don't know what to do at this point, but I'd like to see what can be done and what the cost or what can't be done.
I'll look into it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions before I leave again?
Thank you.
Don't leave the room.
We'll move on to item D, request for approval for board's and commission's appointment. This is for George Harvey. It's the Economic Development Corporation. Term to expire July first, twenty, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. This was basically the seat that Arkell had. And, yeah.
Is Arkell's term up or is he?
Yeah, it was up. And so, Councilman Barnes.
Discussion. After reviewing the applications, I was looking for a seamless fit. So I talked to a EDC board member, attempting to get a pulse of what was needed. I talked with Amy, the director, to get a pulse of what was needed. My thinking was, from the board members now, it would really be great if we had a fiscal institution, someone from a financial source, bank, funding sources that would help us get developers an investment. I recognize that there's no residency clause. I was concerned about attendance, because lately, it's been a challenge to meet the quorum. Garrett's record is pretty bad at attending. I've got him at one physical meeting, one telephone conference over the time. And this gentleman is out of town, it's a seven AM meeting. I understand that these people are volunteering. So with extender circumstances come up, I can understand them not showing up. But I was more concerned that the DDA, and what I'm saying now is not a requirement for the position, but trying to have a seamless fit, seeing that the integral parts are there to help with the development of the EDC and some of their goals, that there may have been some conversation with the DDA, ARC, they're all up under the same roof, to see what we all thought, what they all thought was necessary for that seat. But right now, the applicant, Mr. Harvey, is an excellent candidate. I'm just concerned about the fit. He's a very successful businessman, he's a homegrown Albion person. Seven AM meeting from Ypsilanti. I was hoping he was here. He is a business owner. I would like to hear from him that he would say that he can attend, because with a lot of the things that Danielle just presented, the EDC is really being dynamic right now, moving in a positive direction under the same roof with the other entities trying to move Albion forward. So I would hope that there would be some consideration of Amy, the director, and the board itself. Was there any feedback from the board on this application? Did they know the applicants who were coming? Because the board hires Amy and we place the board members in, I just think there should be some kind of connection, that there's some continuity, that, hey, this is the piece that's needed, this is the piece that's needed, so we can move forward on the board. Thank you.
Well, a couple comments. I think one of the things that going forward, we got to make sure that we stay on topic and not try to, you know, be offensive towards our colleagues on council. That's really important, that's really important. Because I would refute some of the things you say.
Point of order.
But the other thing I would say-
Point of order.
The other thing I would say-
You have a rule on the point of order.
Is-
Here you start, I didn't do anything wrong.
The other thing I would say is that one of major concerns that I've heard from Representative Precinct One is a need to redevelop industrial sites. And I think that what impressed me about the material that I received from Mr. Harvey is, I guess, his career, a successful career in froungy work and manufacturing and doing those kinds of things. And if I recall, I think before Harvard closed, he actually made a bid to try to purchase Harvard. So I think that this appointment is in line with what I've heard as a concern for jobs that are available to, you know, Albion's working-class people. And I think that this is an appointment that's in line with that spirit and the message that I've received on that. There, I guess the other thing I'd say is that there are going to be at least two appointments next year. So I think that that's something that can be, you know, the concerns you have about strategizing the seats and how that works with realizing the vision of the board. I think that that's still possible. And I think that, the final thing I'll say, I think the way the council is set up and local government is set up is basically for citizens to entrust us with looking out for their best interest. And so if we, I know at least in my case, if I go out and tell citizens that we need to do more for employment and dealing with issues of underemployment, unemployment, and access to jobs, then I think that I would want to follow through on that, on appointments that I make. And so I think that while, you know, I think it's important to consult the individuals who have volunteered on boards, I think it's important too that as really the elected officials to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that what we have basically told the public that we're going to do in terms of appointments and budget allocations and hiring and all of that. So I think that's really important. Councilmember French.
Thank you. It's absolutely clear that this candidate is an outstanding candidate. My concern is the statement that you made, Mayor, about the idea of trying to bring about change, which I'm okay with. But to assume that this council body is by its election, by our public, experts in economic development, is of great concern. So I'm okay with this appointment, because this is an excellent candidate. But I would rather our appointments take significant advice from those in the business community in Albion as part of an assessment of what is needed in terms of the economic development of our community. So I have no objection to this appointment at all. But I, I think that none of us are experts in economic development, but we have somebody who is. And so if our Economic Development Corporation and the business owners who serve on that board and other business owners in Albion are consulted as part of that, then I'm, I'm full-on bringing in anybody and everybody who can help us do exactly as your goal is, is to bring jobs to Albion. Hundred percent behind you. But to assume that this body can do that without consulting outside experts or current inside experts, I think is disingenuous.
I think, well, two things I'll say. I think that, one, when I'm making appointments, I'm looking at, obviously, qualifications, you know, education background, those kinds of things. But I'm also looking at just, so for example, I sit on Planning Commission, but I have no experience in, you know, I don't have a master's in urban planning or anything like that. But so what ends up happening is you have the professional on staff who makes recommendations. And I think then it opens up to a discussion about, you know, how do we process the information, how do we use that? And I think that that's when it's important, I think, to have, you know, those mix of expertise, even if someone is not necessarily, you know, a zoning person on the Planning Commission or, you know, a business developer on EDC. So, but I get what you're saying. Are there any other, Councilmember Barnes?
It is my duty as an elected official to ask the questions. Sometimes they're tough. If, we always agreed all the time, we'd only need one councilperson. I did research in this, and I just brought the research so constituents could know. Then I looked at the applications and I saw what was there. This is an excellent candidate, don't get me wrong, and I'm going to approve him also. But I had to make the statements on other candidates and what the pulse of the EDC, which I feel is right now. They wanted a different piece of the puzzle in a financial institution situation.
Seeing no other comments, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. We will move on to item E, which is a request for approval of Resolution Number 2017-34, a resolution for temporary exemption for the food hub from sidewalk cafe ordinance, location restriction.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Sure. Mayor and council, as Amy Duprez had mentioned, we're very excited to have our first pop-up restaurant experience here in Albion. And that will be August seventeenth through the twentieth. And they do plan on being on the sidewalks. And in looking at our ordinance, we discovered that our current language only permits that on Superior Street. And this is actually located on Erie Street. So at your next council meeting, we will have an ordinance that expands the ability to have the sidewalk cafes, outdoor cafes, in the downtown district. But in the interim, because this will take place prior to your consideration of the amended ordinance, we're asking that you approve the exemption for this event.
Any questions for council? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Reed. Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. City manager's report.
Thank you. Mayor and council, I'm very pleased to announce that we also have AmeriCorVista participants working in City Hall. And I would like to ask that Lauren Freeman come forward along with Andrew Texel. And Lauren will be working on community planning initiatives, and Andrew will be focused on neighborhood stabilization efforts. And if you could just tell a little about yourself and read our council.
Good evening. My name's Lauren Freeman. I'm originally from Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and I attended the University of Iowa. I studied political science and economics there, and I graduated just this past May. I'm really excited to be in Albion. I'll be working in City Hall as an AmeriCorVista. And so I'll be doing community planning work, hoping to engage the community in planning processes and expand economic opportunity through those processes. So I'm really excited to get to know all of you. Thanks.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Texel. I'm from Kalamazoo, Michigan, and I attended Michigan State University. Got a degree in arts and humanities. And I will be also working in City Hall in the neighborhood stabilization position, working to remove neighborhood blight and connect residents to housing resources so they can stay in their home. So, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Here's another Vista in the audience, and Chris.
I don't know.
Councilmember, you want to, Councilmember French.
The other Vistas are in attendance, so we were going to do this at the next council meeting.
Oh, okay.
But they're here, so. Chris, if you could, Ryan, he's already been introduced, so.
I recognize one face.
Chris.
Yeah.
Hi, you speaking, I would have dressed up a little better. Hello, everyone. I'm Chris Herwier. I am originally from Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I attended Albion College, graduated this May with a degree in political science and history and a major in public policy and service. I'll be working with the Albion Food Hub, so with the new director, Caitlin Burrard, to work towards increasing the capacity and the use of the food hub itself, creating a database for our local aggregation partners and just expanding the opportunities that the food hub can provide for us and hopefully get the food hub closer to a, being financially independent and not relying on grants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What high school did you go to?
I went to Godwin Heights High School. It's in Wyoming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Odell. I'm from Brunswick, Ohio, about twenty minutes south of Cleveland. I recently graduated. I recently graduated from Notre Dame College, not the university, it's South Euclid, not South Bend. I'm a support management major. I'll be working with Economic Development Corporation with a focus on job access and connection as well as economic development. I know we have a lot on our plate there, and they've already got the ball rolling, year one, and I'm just excited to hit the ground running. So thank you all very much for having me here.
Thank you.
And I just gave a brief introduction of Leah, but she.
My name's Leah Parr. I am from Vancouver, Washington, which is by Portland, Oregon, not the one in Canada. I graduated in psychology and human services from Western Washington University a while ago. And I went to, I'm a lot older, and I went to SIT Graduate Institute in Balaboro, Vermont. And I'm happy to be working with Albion Library. I came from another library about the same size, so I'm really excited to be working with Cindy.
Great.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. We're very excited to have the entire team, the new team, year two, come board. And our councilmember French, are you still looking for two positions?
We have, we have made, we have a position that will be starting in a couple of weeks, on the eighteenth. Andrew Freund from Atlanta, Georgia will be joining us, working, where is he working? Land Bank. He's working at the Land Bank, thank you. He's got some significant GIS experience, so hopefully can partner with Albion City to do some work on mapping the city and its resources and its opportunities. And then we have Marquita Frost will be joining us end of August, the twenty-eighth, I believe. And she'll be working at the Albion Healthcare Alliance. And we have made an offer to a young woman to serve at the Forks Senior Center. She's got some other position interviews to do, and so we'll know in the next two or three weeks whether she'll be joining us. And so if we are successful in landing this particular candidate, then we will have a full complement of ten Vista members and a leader. And once we are all assembled as a team, we will bring everybody to council to introduce everybody at the same time. Here are the first crew.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. And we're very pleased to acknowledge that the clerk elections has received the new election equipment. So she should be getting trained on that shortly, and then she can demonstrate to all of us how it's supposed to work. And I want to thank you for approving the annual employee picnic that will be on Friday, August twenty-fifth, from one to five at Victory Park. And I also want to thank Attorney Harkness for his donation and the support from all the mayor and council members as well for this effort, so we can say thank you to our hardworking employees. Also want to mention that both the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Downtown Development Authority meetings for this week have been canceled. The cleanup recycling day that was held on July twenty-second, they collected over eleven thousand pounds of electronics, mostly those large TVs, which I can attest to, because when I moved here, I couldn't give it away. And, let's see, last year, however, they had collected about eighteen thousand pounds, so there was a significant decrease. Some of that we do attribute to people now utilizing the Granger service. So it's kind of interesting to see those trends. Also in regards to Granger, I have before you on your desk the sample letter that will be going out to residents if they have had a cancellation of their service for non-payment. And to remind everyone that once they receive the notice, they have the ten days from the date of that notice to have the service reinstated, or they can be assessed the fees in accordance with our ordinance. Marshall Public Schools announced the appointment of Mr. Robert Giles as the principal for Harrington Elementary School. And the Albion NAACP announced today that they will be holding their back-to-school, stay-at-school celebration on August thirtieth at Harrington Elementary School. We'll get more details as that develops. On August twenty-eighth, we have scheduled a council work session in regards to medicinal marijuana regulations and proposals. That will be at seven p.m. The Festival of the Forks is scheduled for September fourteenth through the seventeenth. The Chamber has reserved Riga Park, Lloyd's Park, and Stoffer Plaza. They're not currently making any plans to have the activities along Superior Street, anticipating that the road may not be completed by that time. And we also have a request that was from the Leisure Hour Club for a beer tent in association with the Chamber during the festivities. We received an unofficial announcement that we should be getting a five-hundred-thousand-dollar Michigan enhancement grant towards the renovation of the water tower. So we're awaiting official confirmation of that later this year. Labor negotiations are starting. We received the invoice from Miller Canfield in regards to the work they did relative to the Albion Trust, and that invoice was for five hundred dollars. On October twenty-first, we're going to have the second annual Walk the Beat. So we're looking forward to that. They are selling raffle tickets for ten dollars each to help support the event. And you can get more information at the website, walkthebeat.org, or by contacting Cliff Harris. And the Big Reed Celebration, this is their third year, and they're having a celebration on Friday, August eleventh, from at twelve noon at President Detser's house, and mayor and council, you have all been invited to attend.
Thank you. We'll move forward, future agenda items. I have a couple, but are there any from the council? Future agenda items? Oh, I'm sorry.
City attorney is you.
Yes. Yes. That will be the next thing, so I need those. If you have not, I've received. Oh, yeah. No.
Did we get those? Who did that?
Yeah, you turned them in, yeah.
Did I turn them in?
I have, well, I'll contact. Are there any other from the council? Okay, I have a couple. So one is, and I've already talked to Colin about this, we need an ordinance on marriage, like when we do merit, when the, when, I guess, I guess, an ordinance on the fee structure for marriage licenses, and then the mayor does that. Because when I was prepping for that, I noticed that we're supposed to have an ordinance that sets the.
Well, we have a.
The fee.
An ordinance that sets fees, but we just may not have marriage listed on, right? So we would just have, we're gonna have to create a new ordinance, we just have to amend or.
Okay.
Set our regulations. Either way, it's just a, it's a simple fix. I'll give a deal on that.
Councilwoman?
Yes. Colin had provided his input. We need to meet again.
What was that?
We need to, so he, Attorney Harkness has provided his review of that. He emailed it to us, we need to meet one more time.
Okay, I haven't seen it, so you got it?
Oh, yeah, okay.
I haven't seen it.
Oh, you didn't see it, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, well, we're gonna, we'll schedule, we'll schedule a meeting. The other.
Information highway stopped at the mayor's.
Yeah. The other, two other things. So one, I've mentioned it, but I would like to kind of start the process of at least looking at what it might cost to do the Gmail email thing. Because I know there are nonprofits and educational institutions that use that. I'm just curious about what those fees would be, what the structure is, you know, if they do, would we still need, you know, our own physical server on site? But to kind of start looking at that. And then I know budget is coming up. So one of the things that I mentioned in the goal-setting session was a possible charter revision issue. And so I'm curious about quotes, because I know a number of years ago, there was one quote. But trying to start looking at, you know, whether it's a firm or a, you know, a sole attorney who does that, what that might look like from a fee, fees-wise. So those are the, my three future things. So the marriage thing, the charter thing, and the Gmail email thing. Councilmember French?
I can provide some information, because in advance, you and I have had a conversation about making this.
Okay.
Over to Google Docs, or Google as an institution. The city, oh, sorry, the college switched over to Google a number of years ago. To maximize their security, they have the email system on their own servers.
Okay.
And they keep separate, on a separate server, those documents that are, that are shared. So I think that there will be some cost savings. I think the convenience part, especially because it's a free software. You don't have the cost of Microsoft upgrades and all those sorts of things. But in terms of sort of whether we can be completely independent and cloud-based, the recommendation that we received from Google was, in fact, if you want security, you have the email system on a server at your institution, whatever that institution will be.
And we've had these conversations, you know, I think one of the things that impressed me about that was the fact that you really have access to, well, two things. You have access to, you know, we can have access to our council packets, any additional things that come in can be there, can be archived. And then the other thing that I remembered is, and this is coming from the board and commissioner, board and commissioner appoint, training that we had at the end of the year, is if you're on a particular city board and you get a document from the board, then, you know, that's, your personal email's kind of foible. And so, you know, I, my understanding with the Gmail thing, you can actually set up.
Yes.
You can give everyone their own city address, and if their term's up, you can turn it off. And so it kind of, it kind of prevents that mixture of, you know, individuals' personal and city work. So, yeah. Are there any other future agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, everyone is here. Public comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. And we just ask for proper decorum. Are there any general public comments this evening? And when you come forward, please state your name and address.
Mike Bearman, one-one-oh-one-six, Twenty-Nine Mile Road. I have to tell you that I went to the, one of the most lovely concerts, swinging at the Shell, Sunday night, and I'm sure all of you were there. And I saw most of the AmeriVista people there, too. Cheryl, I saw, but it was absolutely lovely, and I can't say enough good things about that concert. It was very, very well attended. As I sat there and looked around, there was people from all of the cities around us there watching that concert. Concord, Homer, Marshall, everything. And when we were sitting there talking, I, because I was talking to some of the seniors, and they says, isn't this a tremendous thing that we can sit around and have such a nice concert that all these senior citizens, it wasn't all senior citizens there, but all these senior citizens could come and sit and watch? And it was absolutely great. The other thing is, if you were there, you would've seen the bicycle trail is up and running. I mean, it's being built, and it's absolutely great-looking. And I have to commend, well, I have to thank Cheryl for coming and speaking at Rotary the other day. And we're always glad to hear from the city on these things. We have to make sure that all of our organizations are getting the information and being able to be part of what's going on in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, is there any other public comment?
Hi, everyone. Stacy Levin, Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to make mention of the five weeks to five K training program to teach you how to run. It starts on August fourteenth, it's a Monday. It runs through September thirteenth, and it's every Monday and Wednesday, six to seven p.m. Meet at Albion College Track Gates on Hannah Street. For more information, you can register on albionrecdesk.com or call Oakland Fitness Center. We have the numbers posted on our city website as well as our Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. Thank you, Stacy, because I did forget that one. But I forgot another one. August fifteenth will be the official selfie with City Hall day. So we will be encouraging people to come and take pictures at City Hall, and then you can post them at a Twitter feed, and you can actually win prizes. Look forward to that one.
Okay. Seeing no further public comment this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, good evening.